Good morning and welcome to the city council meeting for the city of International Falls for Monday, July 3rd of 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask the administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. And we would move to the agenda with two additions, one on correspondence and one on reminders. Your pleasure with the agenda. Motion by Councilor Drowba to approve the agenda with the additions. Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the agenda? There are none? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Agenda is approved. And just for the audience and the television audience, I would also just explain that the time of this meeting is 11:00 a.m., that we have begun, and the purpose is with the July 4th celebration being a two-day celebration here in the community, we will be starting the celebration this afternoon at 4:00 in the park. And wanted to be sure that rather than having a 4:30 meeting and tying us up into the evening, we have moved the council meeting to 11:00. So hopefully that's a good justification for that as we celebrate our country's independence holiday. With that, I would move to the approval of the minutes of the June 19 regular city council meeting. Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the minutes. Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the motion of the minutes. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Move to the payment of claims and the financial report. And we do have a corrected copy, so if you have a highlighted copy, it should be in front of you. We have one transfer, and that's to the general fund 101 from the lodging tax fund number 812, $398.93. In the accounts payable, claims, the city of International Falls regular claims are Airport commission claims, that was corrected, and it's now at $19,808.10. The airport commission terminal project claims of $830,728.16. The explanation on the airport commission claims is there was a duplication or one of the invoices was incorrect that came in. Deputy City Administrator?
Mayor Anderson, when I read the cover sheet, that cover sheet included a claim that was not in the packet of checks that was given to me to provide, it was reduced by that little over $1,200.
So there was an invoice that wasn't there that was on the cover sheet? Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. Your pleasure then with the resolution on the transfers and payment of claims. Motion by Councilor Briggs to adopt the resolution. Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion on the transfers or the payment of claims or the motion? There are none? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Resolution is adopted. Transfers and payment of claims are approved. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to approach the council at this time that's not on the agenda? Mr. Dan McCarthy?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the airport commission. I don't have any complaints. I'm just trying to get an understanding that with the completion of the first phase here coming up, I believe you said a seven to eight weeks, something like that, is as far as the city's portion of the obligation within budget, on budget, or is there a chance that it may go over budget?
At this point, we're not exactly sure because we have a number of change orders, and we don't know exactly how the change orders, some are going to be reductions, some are going to be increases. And so we don't have a complete financial understanding at this point. I would say that it could be a small overage if it is, but I don't know for sure at this point. And some of that will also be eligible for federal reimbursement, too.
Mayor Anderson?
Thank you.
I have an issue that I think affects airport and planements. I've made several reservations in the last few months online, and Delta is not showing, or the Delta site that I use to make my reservations, is not showing as many connections as you can see if you go directly to the Minneapolis. Now, you know what I'm saying? Okay. When I book out of, if I book out of here or choose Falls Airport, I don't get the same number of connections I can see if I go to the Minneapolis first.
So the International Falls website?
I don't know if it's the International Falls website because I use Delta to do my booking.
It should be, have a connection to the Delta website for making your reservation.
Right. What happens, to give you an example, I wanted to fly to Portland and I didn't want to arrive at midnight. So when I booked, when I tried to leave from here, the only flight I could get would have gotten me there at midnight. However, if I go to the website from Minneapolis, then there's some other flights showing. So it's not showing all the flights. And that's happened more than once to me.
Very good.
I think it's a malfunction or something. Or maybe they're not updating your flight schedules on the website?
That could be. That could very well be.
Yeah.
Very good. That's helpful information. Is there any other, anyone else in the audience that wishes to approach the council that's not on the agenda? There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting for that. We'll move to the consent agenda, and we have one item under the consent agenda, and that's to approve the travel expenses for city council and staff, and to adopt a resolution encouraging the citizens of International Falls to attend the grand opening of the Minnesota State Capitol. Your pleasure with the consent agenda. Motion by Councilor Drowba to approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilor Pearson. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried and consent agenda is approved. Thank you. Move to new business, and the item number one under new business is to consider the sponsorship and the assistance for the Bacchus Community Center for the Bacchus Rainy Lake Triathlon on Saturday, August 12th. Whoa, and this says Julia, but Robin is here.
Me again.
All right.
Oh, Julia called us sick today.
Oh, no. Okay. Thank you. So, whoa, and Robin.
I believe we're just asking for use of city beach as has been previously done, and then whatever assistance the city has provided before, such as EMT, and I believe traffic cones and possibly barricades.
And lifeguard on Saturday, August 12th.
Yes, I think we have the memo from Ward and Julia outlining. I think the only one that came into question was item number four, and that would be the sheriff's office would have to provide traffic control on the county road. The city police would not be?
We did write a letter to the county, and then we'll attend at the county and request for police help.
Very good.
How many people attend, though? How many did you have enroll last year?
Last year we had about 60 individuals. We had around six teams, a team of two and a team of three.
Been running about 75, 80, you know, individual participants for the event.
Maybe I'll enter.
Already the sixth annual, so it's moving along very well. Council's pleasure then with the request to use of the city beach and other items for the Bacchus Rainy Lake Triathlon. Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve the use and items that are needed.
Please to second Briggs, Councilor Briggs' motion.
Councilor Jaxa seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion or the triathlon. Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried, and that is approved. Thank you for being here. Good luck with the triathlon. Item number two under the new business is to request for a cosponsor of the Kooching Labor Assembly Labor Day picnic on Monday, September 4th, and the closure of Third Street and the use of Smokey Bear Park. Mark Thorpe is here, representing the Labor Day picnic and Kooching Labor Assembly. And, Mark?
Thank you for the opportunity. This would be our seventh year, and we do appreciate the city's cooperation and cosponsoring in the past, and we would like to say thank you for all the help from the council and the staff, and we hope we can continue with this. It seems to be getting bigger and better and more popular every year. And we just hope we can continue this relationship.
And at your place is a, is a listing here of the closures for the, and Mark and I had a discussion last week about that. And just maybe to quickly go through that for you, of course, today we're at July 3rd and 4th, and we close down the street for the celebration for 4th of July. Then we have the 26th, the crazy days, closing of Highway 1171 for that, for the chamber. August 18th is the Elks Corn and Broth Feed. August 25th and 26th is the Bass Championship, and then September 4th is Labor Day. And so submitted all of those requests at one time to the Minnesota Department of Transportation. I believe I've contacted everyone, and I know Mark has a copy of it now, so in addition to their requesting our cosponsorship, we do have the approval of the closure of the street. Your pleasure with that. Motion by Councilor Briggs to cosponsor the Kooching Labor Assembly Labor Day picnic and approve the closure of the street. Second by Councilor Drowba. Discussion on the motion or the Labor Day picnic. Councilor Drowba?
Just out of curiosity, I know that it's not directly affiliated with you. Aren't going to be the same, same day this year, or the?
I understood they canceled this year.
Okay.
That was our understanding, was they were not doing it this year.
I was just curious if they had that going along with it again. I thought that worked out pretty slick.
We wish they would have. It was good for both groups, we figured, you know?
Very good. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Cosponsorship is approved, and the street is closed. Will be closed for you. Thank you. Item number three under new business is a resolution considering County, Kooching County Tax Forfeit Properties list within the city limits. City Administrator?
Mayor, council, as the mayor indicated, there's a draft resolution before you that we're asking for action by the city council. The second sheet in your packet of information is a letter that was provided by Nathan Heibel. He's the Kooching County Land Commissioner. And in accordance with Minnesota statutes, Chapter 282, they requested council authorization to sell the properties or put them up for public auction, but all local units of government are given an opportunity to acquire the properties if they wish for public purposes. So I've worked in concert with the city engineer, Public Works Director Gary Skolman, and Gary's put together the attached information, and you can see that he's got a proposed memo and a recommendation that we allow the sale of all the lots from numbers 10 or tracks from 10 through 30 and number 33. And then he was recommending that we request the county not put lots 31 and 32 or tracks 31 and 32 for sale because neither of those two tracks have water or sewer service. And typically, when the public would choose to purchase these, when they're up for public auction, there's some expectation that they'll be able to develop the properties, and we wouldn't want to have that happen without water and sewer main service. So his recommendation is that those two tracks be requested by the county to not be sold with the remainder being authorized for sale. And from a public works standpoint, none of the properties would be identified for use or need for any public purpose on the part of the city. But of course, that would be something that the council should decide, and this draft recommendation, or draft resolution, rather, is authorizing all those parcels with the exception of tracks 31 and 32 being removed from the sale list.
Your pleasure then with the recommendation of the Public Works Director and Administrator with regard to the tax forfeit properties?
I'll make a motion.
To accept that recommendation?
Yeah.
Motion by Councilor Jaxa?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Question?
Yes, I have a question.
Councilor Jaxa?
What does non-buildable mean?
We wouldn't allow buildings to be constructed there without the sewer and water service because we don't allow septic systems in there. And so, and it's not immediately adjacent to the property, so that creates some of the difficulty. I believe they front, if I recall correctly, on 8th Avenue, and there isn't service at those two, along that property. Both lots are buildable from a construction standpoint. They're currently Zoned C3, and each lot is 100 by 142, so they're sized sufficiently, but they don't have the water and sewer service to them. In addition, the Public Works Director's done a fairly extensive amount of work identifying letters that would be included by the county when these properties are put up for auction, indicating whether they have sewer and water service and the size of the lot, so that we can try and deter some of the comments that we would get, or calls that we would get into the office for people wondering what can be done with these lots. So he's got an information sheet for each track that he, that will be providing to the county.
I guess I don't understand, 512 8th Avenue, 107, 1,007 Sixth Street. They don't have water and sewer there right at the curb?
Which item are you talking?
25 foot, it's a 25 foot.
Well, that's why it's non-buildable. Okay. The lot's too narrow. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilor Drowba?
I guess I have two questions. The first one is, I was looking at the map.
Which one are you?
31 and 32, the ones that were not recommended.
Yes.
Those are commercial lots right in the heart of the residential area? I mean, because you have the trailer park across the street, which must be residential on both sides of that. Isn't that kind of bizarre that we have lots in the middle of a residential area?
I don't have a copy of the zoning map in front of me to look at what it is, but that's what was indicated on the, is that it is commercial, Zoned Commercial C3.
And then my other question is, is the county then sets the price on the land? We have no, no input?
That's correct.
Where does the county set the price at? The deferred taxes or the uncollected taxes?
I couldn't speak to that. I don't know what they base it on. I think the state's preference is to have it something be a market rate, but what I've been told in past experience has been, we haven't had a sale for a few years, but typically there's not a lot of interest in our properties, so I think the county has an interest in trying to set a value on it that will encourage the sale of the properties and potentially redevelopment. Oftentimes, the lots wouldn't have a lot of value other than to anybody on either side of them that they could, you know, tie in with their existing lot. So, and perhaps it could be left vacant, or they could construct a shed or a garage on it for use for an adjacent lot that they already own.
I would then refer to items 10 through 17, and I know that we have noted, and so if someone was to purchase the lots that are stated non-buildable, they would understand that. But the ones that are listed as 37 and 1/2, I thought there had to be a minimum of 50 feet to be a buildable lot in the city now. I have not the right understanding there? Three of them that are 37 and 1/2 foot, that would seem to me would also be non-buildable. And then I note down there on number 19, that one's noted as non-buildable, and it's 58 feet, so now I'm even more confused.
Which one was that?
Number 19 is, it shows to be 58 and 1/2 feet in width, and, but it's not buildable. So, and maybe it's because the depth isn't enough sufficient.
Well, the classification or the assignment of whether it's buildable or non-buildable would be based on what the current zoning classification or zoning district would allow for, in terms of minimum lot width and lot size. And so if he's classified it as buildable, it would be because it meets the minimums. My general understanding is the same as yours, is that 50 feet would be the minimum width that we allow, but I would have to verify it. I have not verified the information lot by lot, and Mr. Skolman, of course, has served as zoning administrator for decades, so he's familiar with that. But I can, I can re-verify that information, and it should be verified before any information sent over to the county. Because that would have a bearing on, on the marketability of any of the lots.
It may be of interest by a next-door property owner on some of these to purchase and just have a little larger lot, but we don't want to have folks building on something that's non-standard today. And I know that we're going to be probably looking at the revisions to our zoning with the comprehensive plans.
Absolutely.
Further questions or discussion with regard to the tax forfeit properties list? It's great to see the county moving on some of these tax forfeit pieces so that they can be dealt with one way or the other, so. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion was carried, and resolution is adopted, and tax forfeit list is approved. Thank you. Move to item number four under new business, and that's to consider the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee's recommendation to accept the plan for the Green Acres Park playground equipment and ADA compliant wood fiber installation. And Derek Foss is with us here today to go over, and I think there's a handout in your packet here that's, looks like Midwest.
Midwest Playscapes.
Thank you.
Yep.
And that's the one you're going to be speaking from?
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. In your, in your packet, I believe you have this image. There's a couple of them. It's a mock-up of the design for the park. On there, it's showing that big open area. That is where the main play structure will go, but because that play structure was purchased from a different company, he, they will install it, but he couldn't put it in the, in the design layout. But that open space in the playground area is where it will be. Also, on another note, it looks underneath this one set of equipment as if it's a different type of surface material. That will not be. That will also be the ADA wood fiber. That was just the way it had to be put in there in their, in their design information. The initial plan was to leave the existing swings in place, but after they did the measurements and everything at Midwest Playscapes, it would not work with the layout to keep any of the, any of the old equipment in there besides the digging machine in the corner. So there's a new set of swing sets and everything. So all the equipment will be, will be brand new in there, save for the digging machine in the corner, because that one's basically new. It looks like it was just put in there, so. The quote came in at, the quote that's in with this packet isn't the actual quote. It doesn't have the wood fiber in it. I'm not sure if you have this one or not, but the quote came in with the wood fiber for $23,953.53. We saved over $3,000 by going with this company because we get a Northeast Service Co-op discount. This company's based out of Bemidji. They didn't charge anything for any of this design work or anything like that, so. And then we also get a discount on it.
I think we have that, that sheet, and so that figure.
It's pretty good. It's on the packet. Handout this morning.
Mayor, that, that particular original quotation is attached to the back of the cover memo that was included in your packet that was sent out on Friday, and it's not materials.
There we go.
So that shows the total amount of $23,953.53. And what Derek is indicating is that the bid in the handout that you received today does not include the cost of the certified ADA tamarack wood fiber, and that delivered cost is $6,169. That's not included in the equipment costs, and that bid cost was 19,000, the 19,000?
401.
401 number, 407 number, so. The total cost for the equipment will be $23,953.53. That includes the wood fiber delivered and put in place. The only question on cost is that we have not received the cost for installation of the equipment. We've, we talked about having our crews do it initially, and I think after our meeting with the Public Works Committee, it was agreed by the people at Citizens for Bacchus, as well as the Public Health Department, that it might be best to just have the people that are providing it actually do the installation. They can probably do it in less than half the time that our crews could, because this is what they do on a regular basis. And then we'll make sure that we have the appropriate spacing, height above the ADA compliant wood fiber blanket and so forth. So it makes more sense to have them do it. I think, Derek, you can confirm this, but the costs that were discussed were somewhere between $4,100 and $5,000. But we, it was supposed to be included with the information. This plan was actually sent to us on Sunday, and, and it just didn't include the labor costs.
We, there had, there were some things that needed to be changed and altered. The initial labor cost that we got quoted was $4,100, but due to having to get an additional piece of equipment, it is the swing set that'll increase the labor costs and as well as boxing in, moving and boxing in that digging machine, because you can't use one of the digging machines in the ADA fiber. It just wouldn't work as good as it does in sand. So you will have timbers and box that in in the one corner of the, of the play area. So the digging machine will still be there, because that's a very, very popular one with all the kids, so. But yeah, the initial quote was 4,100. Scott Winter, who's the fellow I'm working with from Midwest Playscapes, he indicated that it would be between that 4,100 and 5,000. So I'm waiting to hear back from him on that. I know that they are closed through until Wednesday, I believe. So, but he was nice enough to send this on, on Sunday when he received it from their design team, so.
Real quick clarification, so it's not the city crews that are putting it in, because I think at the meeting we had discussed we'd have someone come in and show them how to install it. Now it's just someone else is coming in to install it?
Yes. We'd We'd have someone else come in and install it. We would still need the city crew to do the prep work on the site, as far as removal of the sand 12 inches below, you know, 12 inches of sand, and remove the equipment that's there, save for the digging machine. But all the rest of it can go. And then Scott and his crew will come in, they'll install the equipment. He's a certified playground safety specialist. He's an inspector, so it will be all installed safely with proper spacing, proper height. And he figures he can come in with his crew and get it done in two or three days. And he did give me a timeline. I asked him when he thought it would possibly be able to happen, and he said beginning to middle of August. This equipment, once we get it ordered, will take three to four weeks to come in. So it'll actually work out fairly well, that they should be able to set up a time to come in and do it. And then that also gives the public works crew some time to get that sand moved out of there.
Okay. A motion would be in order then to accept the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee recommendation to accept the plan, the playground equipment and the fiber installation. We would authorize our staff to remove the sand and prepare the site, accept the donation of the money from the Citizens for BACUS AEB, approve the low quote of the Midwest Playscapes at $23,953.53, and then also have the inclusion of not to exceed $5,000 for the installation of the equipment. On that, motion by Council Drowba to... Add in the motion.
Second.
Second by Council Jackson. Question or further discussion?
Yeah.
Please.
Just because I don't remember now, what did we, what are we getting from the BACUS crew for this project? I forget.
We would be getting the monies for the project, for the equipment, playground equipment, which is going to be the $23,953.
Yep. It was, all in all, it'll be $60,000, roughly $60,000 worth of donations from the, coming from BACUS.
Okay, so it's more than this, so.
Yes. There's already been the main play structure, which was hair under $28,000, was already purchased and is here with these grant dollars and the fundraising dollars that BACUS had provided. This will cover the cost of all this equipment. They will also be covering the cost of the installation of the equipment. And depending on what's left over, it'll be a few thousand dollars, perhaps some landscaping.
Okay. Just trying to get the overall.
And the city staff, city street department has removed, I think, everything but the swing set maybe at this point?
Last time I was there, granted it's been probably a week and a half since I was there, but they had just removed the main playground structure. All the other structures were still there.
Still there.
And the sand was too. And I think they did, they did that just because they weren't sure exactly...
What's coming.
What was coming and what needed to be done. But yeah, now that we have it more set in stone, it'd be all the equipment removed except for the digging machine. The sand pulled out of there 12 inches deep, and Scott indicated to just put by the one corner, the two to three yards of that sand that they're removing, so he can backfill in the sand area where the digging machine is going to be.
And I had one of the neighbors in the office this morning, who has said that if we need a close place to dump the rest of the sand that would come out of there, his property is open to accepting that. So evidently, he's been filling in. I'm not sure which property it is, but, so I asked him to get in touch with Ted, Ted Brokaw, the city street commissioner, to take care of that, so that will happen.
I have another...
Please.
You know, I'm disappointed. How much more would it be to not have the fiber and go with the rubber padding that was discussed at some point in one of these meetings?
The rubber, like poured rubber?
Yeah.
It was over $80,000 to do that area. And the thing about that poured rubber, it's excellent stuff, but it doesn't hold up all that well to harsh Minnesota winters.
Fiber, if you fall on that, the wood chips will dig into your flesh. I don't see that that's a very comfortable alternative to maybe sand, but...
From my understanding, I'm no expert on this by any means, but my understanding, what Scott had told me, is sand has a safety fall distance of, I believe it was four feet, where this wood fiber has a 10-foot fall safety rating. I don't know how it works. Apparently, maybe it's more spongier or something.
Maybe when it gets wet.
No, I have no idea.
It just seems, it seems to me, a novice, that it, you know, uninformed layperson here, that fiber would not be as comfortable, but since they think it's the correct way to go, I guess I'll...
Yep, it's...
Might not be more comfortable, but might be safer.
Well, comfort and safety, I think, are so connected, but, okay.
Hopefully, it's good Minnesota tamarack that they're putting in, so.
Yep. It comes from, I believe, Coloreine is where they're getting it. I think that's what he said was Colorene, so.
Well, this, excuse me, city administrator.
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of things regarding the wood fiber. It is necessary, and, you know, over time, the ADA standards have changed, but this particular wood fiber product is a Minnesota product. It is ADA compliant, which is important for us. So if somebody is, for some reason, somewhat limited in terms of their mobility, they can still use some of this equipment, depending on what the nature of their disability or limitation is. And so we're going to be complying with the law as it regards to ADA, and I think that's a very positive thing. Secondly, it's, it shouldn't go unstated that the funding, which is fairly substantial, and Derek indicated it's over $60,000, is being funded by over 10 grand in pennies for play donations from the public, which they've worked quite hard over a period of over a year to try and generate those monies and raise monies. And then there was roughly $48,000 provided in the Super Bowl legacy funds in a grant that was received. And Derek's office worked very diligently and hard to get that, and had only two weeks to submit the application. So we really should feel very fortunate that we're getting these improvements at essentially no cost to the public. I think what I would like to point out, and it is indicated in the motion, is that our public works crews, which we indicate have to do some site prep work. I want to go a little bit further and work with our public works department to just make sure that we kind of improve the drainage from the site and the play area in particular, so we don't have any water that might stay in that area. It's like a bowl, because it has wood timbers all the way around. So we want to make sure that we facilitate adequate drainage. And then we might want to extend that rock gravel that goes from the road up to where the park shelter is, and not all the way up to the play area, to ensure that disabled people can get all the way onto the wood fiber blanket. So I'll work with them to try and make sure that that works too. And that would be something that we would just do with our existing crews and with existing funds, but it'll be very limited in terms of cost. So, you know, I'm very thankful that the Public Health Department and Citizens for BACUS stepped up with all these funds, and we'll get it installed the right way by getting these experienced crews to do it. And again, that's at their cost. There won't be any cost to the city for the installation by these.
As you point out, city administrator, there's many folks to thank for this investment in this Green Acres Park. It's going to be one of the showcases in the community once it's completed. Look forward to getting some pictures and sending that back to the folks at the Super Bowl legacy monies that have been committed. Thank you, Derek, to you and your office for the good work that you have done here also. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes, motion is carried on the motion, and accept the plans and all of the contributions. Thank you.
Well, thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Happy July 4th to you, sir. Continuing on item number four, and that's recommendations from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee. I'm going to jump on, because we could talk about the item E, the approval of the enlarged dog exercise area, and from the Borderland Humane Society. The committee has been out looking at the site, and so the recommendation is to have an enlarged dog exercise area at the animal holding facility, and that the Borderland Humane Society is prepared to do the fencing and improvement there. And maybe you want to share with the council?
Let's see, we've been meeting for a while about, when we built the building, they put in a cement pad with some, a little bit of fencing around it with two kennels, and that worked out pretty well, since we moved in about two years ago. And then we started discussing what we would call a dog park, but that's not necessarily probably what this is going to be called, dog exercise area, to extend beyond the building, so back into the woods. And then Gary Skolman has the sizes and that type of thing, so I'm not sure what size, if you guys have that. But it'll go back in between the lot limit and then kind of stating some trees. I think that's kind of about it. We'll pay for the fencing, just an opportunity to get the dogs back there and run them, throw a ball, have some fun with them.
Nikki, you've been a longtime member of the Borderland Humane Society, and a lot of good work there, and this also is certainly making it better for the dogs that are being held at the facility and being able to get a little more exercise.
Absolutely. Really, like I mentioned, the guys, when we went out there, there really is no area in the City of International Falls where you can throw a ball to a dog safely. There's no enclosed area in our city at all that you can do that. And so our ultimate goal was to maybe look at a dog park, but we understand this is going to be for the VHS animals only at this point, you know, and things. So, but we're, you know, at least that'll benefit our dogs, and we're happy with that, so.
So the council's pleasure then with the approval of that dog exercise area and the contribution of the fencing by the, and installation by the Borderland Humane Society?
I'll make that motion, and I know fencing is not an insignificant sum of money, so thank you.
Motion by Council Jackson then to approve that exercise area and accept the contribution? Second to the motion.
Second.
Second by Council Briggs. And I don't know, do you have an estimate of cost at this point, Nikki?
Not necessarily. I think we were told $25,000, something to that effect.
Okay, that's significant contribution, though.
Depending on what the size is, and...
That's going to be outlined by the Public Works Department?
I believe so, yes. I think that Gary and them will do that.
Mr. Mayor, I think just to reiterate, the, you know, the committee had made the recommendation to move forward. Where we had left at the last time we had met on-site, and we met with Nikki, is that Gary, the Public Works Director, and Nikki would work together to try and lay out a specific layout for where the fencing would be. And we want to have it be adequate enough and large enough that they can do what Nikki had asked, would be able to throw a ball, throw a frisbee, let the, get the dogs to have an opportunity for some exercise. The committee concluded that they did not want to have this facility be available for public use, but only for use for the dogs that happened to be boarded at the animal holding facility. And then, so Gary will work on the specifics about the fence layout, where the gates need to be, and then also our crews will assist with removing some of the underbrush and some of the trees. Gary in particular is concerned that we keep some of the trees, and so we'll work, Nikki and Gary in particular will work together to come up with something that's mutually satisfactory, and then all the costs will be funded by the Borderland Humane Society.
Very good. Council Drowba?
So after it's installed and we do the original... Maintenance of the facility then just falls back onto the Humane Society, is that correct, for the lawn mowing and the upkeep?
I guess we haven't fully discussed that maybe, but the city does, it's a city-owned building, and so they do go out and mow already out there. So we were curious if they would just continue to mow that area, at least in the summertime. We would maintain it in the winter, because, you know, basically all they do is plow the snow up into big piles in the wintertime. So we aren't really thinking it will probably be incredibly usable in the winter, maybe making a space or something that we can snow blow or something. But in the summer, I guess that's still under discussion with the city, but they are mowing out there at this point, because it is their building.
I think if the brush is removed and it's mowable, I think we should probably have the city crews continue that.
I agree.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes, motion is carried. Thank you for your good work.
Dogs appreciate it.
And happy 4th to you. Then go back to item B under item number four under new business, and that's the installation of a stop sign at the corner of Ninth Street and Ninth Avenue. And this would be just one stop sign, and it would be placed at Ninth Avenue for eastbound traffic at that location. Citizens there have witnessed a number of close calls, and I don't know that there's been an actual accident, but there's been some screeching of brakes and tires there, and so they have asked that the stop sign be placed in that one-way direction, and the committee recommends that.
I would move on that.
Motion by Council Drowba to approve that installation of the stop sign at Ninth Street and Ninth Avenue? Second by Council Pearson. Discussion?
There has been a... Of $2,000 and...
Hmm, I didn't realize that.
Oh.
When I got on council, my wife said, "Make sure..." I never brought it up. It came up from different...
Came up from the citizens.
That's not on the same street as Northern Lumber, is it?
No.
Okay.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No vote, yes, motion is carried, and stop sign is approved. Item C is also a stop sign, and that would be at the corner of Seventh Avenue and Eighth Street, and it would stop traffic on Seventh Avenue at the Eighth Street location. The reason for that is we had citizens come to the Public Works Committee. There are, I want to say, 11 children in the area that were playing. There was an accident there where one of the children that was on a bicycle was hit by a vehicle traveling in the Seventh Avenue direction, so they asked if we couldn't put a stop sign there.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll move on that.
Motion by Council Drowba to place stop signs on Seventh Avenue at Eighth Street? Second by Council Pearson. Questions or discussion?
I'd just like to point out, this is a... There's a ridiculous amount of kids in a two-block radius there. I live two blocks down, and there is probably 11 kids that live on that block area, but that doesn't mean that there's kids from other blocks going over there to play. There's been children at play, signs put up there by people, and I would have to assume in 10 years we could remove the stop sign, but right now, we have a high density of children there, and cars traditionally go pretty fast going north and south there. And I, I'm not out just to put in stop signs to put in stop signs, but there is, something needs to be done at this particular intersection with how many children are in the area.
Are people speeding there, or are they just...
Perceived speeding, I think. I don't think people...
They're going 30, but it feels like 40 from here.
Exactly. And it's on a corner that doesn't have good visibility too, so.
Apartment house runs all the way up to the end of the street. There's an apartment house that runs all the way up to the street, so it's not visible.
Right to the corner, and so there's no...
There's no boulevard or anything there.
Further questions or discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 No vote, yes, motion is carried. Now vote yes, motion is carried, and the installation of the stop signs on Seventh Avenue is approved. Thank you. Item D, recommendation from the Public Works and Infrastructure Committee, is to authorize the Street and Parks Department to purchase a 60-inch, zero-turn, 2017 Toro Grandstand mower on the state bid list of $7,743.84 to come from the Reserve for Capital Outlay. Motion by Councilor Drogba to approve the authorization and the purchase?
Second.
Second by Councilor Pearson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mayor. And Councilor Briggs?
Is this already in place? Have they been using it?
They haven't purchased it yet, no.
I'm just wondering if they had one and they were trying it out, because I saw our city worker pay with a stand-up mower that I'd never seen before. I wonder if they were trying it out.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a demo.
Deputy Administrator?
Oh, okay. I didn't...
That's what Ted had gotten.
Is that what, we're purchasing is a demo?
No, we're purchasing a demo, but he... I'm used.
They were mowing at Smokey Bear Park with it, and I noticed it. And the reason I noticed it is because it's a stand-up type, where you're standing up when you're running it, and I'd never seen that before.
Well, that would be our first stand-up. Correct.
And there's an advantage to it, if it's a stand-up as opposed to a sit-down?
I don't know if line of sight is better when you're standing up on those mowers. It's a large mower, 60 inches is a, you know, good five-feet swath that's being cut at one time, very efficient.
And they can step off of it too. I mean, you don't have to be on top of it for, so if you're going underneath...
Oh.
Go around, but as Ted had brought up at the meeting, it's difficult for people to use it the first day because it's so different. The second day they start to like it, the third day they're sold. That's how he explained it, and I'm glad they have a demo in here now for people to try it. But yeah, this is going to be our first one.
Further questions or discussion? Question on the motion?
Aye.
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 Now vote yes, motion is carried, and the authorization to purchase that lawnmower is approved. Thank you. Move down to item number F under the recommendations, and that's to authorize the work and expenses for the street stabilization on Sixth Avenue West from 20th Street to 19th Street. City Administrator, can you explain with regard to the petition that was sent to the citizens on Sixth Avenue West?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, the council had previously authorized sending letters out to everybody between, located on Sixth Avenue West between 17th Street and 20th Street. And so petitions were received. I don't have the exact percentages in front of me, but we did not meet the minimum 35% for the entire stretch that was necessary in order to have a valid petition submitted to the city. However, everybody between 19th and 20th Street that did submit a, or did sign the petition, all were in agreement that the road should be improved. So when that was considered by the Public Works Committee, they authorized moving forward with doing street stabilization on that stretch between 19th and 20th. It is a gravel road, but according to the Public Works Director, it's never been stabilized for all three blocks. But because we had 100% of the people that submitted petitions were all in agreement to move forward with the street, and it exceeds 50% of the property fronting on between 19th and 20th, the committee recommended going forward and doing the street stabilization this year, and if there's any services that need to go in, water and sewer, they can put those in. I know Ted was looking at a televised shot of the sewer line to see if there was any lots that weren't served by that. But that could occur as early as this year, and then that'll give us a year to let it go through a freeze-thaw cycle before we consider actually moving forward to pave.
That's just a one-block area then we're talking about?
Yes. Rest of the people, there wasn't a sufficient number of people agreeing to sign the petitions to go forward. I will say that Minnesota Improvement Code, Chapter 429, would allow the council to order the improvements. I don't think we've done this in the past unless the public wants to actually have the improvement. The difference would be is if you have a petition, it can be ordered after you have an public improvement hearing with a three-fifths majority of the city council with a petition. If you don't have a petition and the council initiates the project, then it would require a four-fifths majority of the council to approve going forward with the project. That would be the difference between the two approaches. Right now, all we're proposing to do is the stabilization of the street. It'll stay gravel surface through the winter, and then reconsider it this winter and spring as to whether or not we want to move forward with the rest of the streets or just paving that block.
Yeah, the committee in reviewing this, the area between 17th and 19th Street, the other two-block area on Sixth Avenue West, I believe at least 50% is not, does not have any homes or structures on it. That, and so it's going to require, on some of those lots that are owned by various people, if we were to improve it, we would need to put in the water and sewers so that we don't have to dig it up after we get the street improved. And so it seemed as though just a good thing not to go forward with it at this time. Hopefully, we'll see development along there and can get the, get the water and sewer in and then make an improvement to that area. Your pleasure then with the authorizing the street stabilization from 19th to 20th on Recommendation of the Street Public Works Committee?
I'll move for discussion.
Motion by Councilor Drogba to authorize the street stabilization of Sixth Avenue West from 20th to 19th Street. Second to the motion. I would second the motion then on behalf of the committee. Discussion or questions? Councilor Drogba?
I brought this up at the, at the Public Works meeting too. I, I think it's great that we improve the city and we build out and we try to get bituminous surfaces in areas that don't have it right now. That three-block radius, we came just short of getting enough approval in the, in the survey or the petition to be able to do it without holding extra public meetings or whatever. But the reality is to do one block does not make any sense to me, and I feel horrible because in that one block, 100% of the people want to do it, are willing to pay for it. But I also understand when you get to 17th to 19th, the huge challenges we have. We have multiple 50-foot lots where people own just a little piece of property. Each one of those has to have a sewer line ran to it. The cost for the city would be ridiculously high. I want this project to move forward. I would love if we could stabilize, you know, 17th through 20th and work on a project down the road, and I think that that should be something we're looking for, looking towards in the future. I just don't think we can do, it doesn't make sense for me to do 19th to 20th and just have one paved road in the mix of gravel. One of the suggestions that I had brought up at the Public Works meeting is, since we do have so many lots that are owned by multiple people from outside the area, maybe this is a piece where the city purchases a couple of lots so we can combine them. And instead of having 50-foot lots which aren't nearly as desirable in our community, maybe we make it 100-foot lots so people have a little bit more property line, we only have to run one sewer. We'd actually save money in the long run if we were to be able to combine them like that. I, I know a lot of the people that are on 19th to 20th, and this was a big campaign conversation in the past. It was in the last year, and 100% of them from 19th to 20th wanted improvements. It just, to me, it doesn't make sense at this time. I, but I think we need to start structuring some stuff so we can do this next year and have it done in 2019, but we need to figure out what to do around 17th to 19th.
I think I agree with...
Councilor Jackson?
I think, not being part of the committee, and this is the first time I've heard the arguments, but I would, at first blush anyway, totally agree with Councilor Drogba's analysis. I think we need to be more thoughtful about what we're going to do there, and I like your concept of enlarging the lots and making that area more attract, it's a nice area for development, really, I think. So I agree with you, Harley.
Well, it just doesn't make sense to me either to just do one block and now, or even try and do the whole works, and you end up having to dig it up later to stub in sewer and water to other people, so, you know.
But we won't have to on, on the one block between 19th and 20th. Those that should be complete, we will have it complete if there is any lots, but I don't believe there's any empty lots that do not have water and sewer right now. The other, the other argument for it is that 20th Street is an improved street, and this will be attaching to that. And so right now you're carrying gravel and sand out onto 20th Street. It makes sense to do this one block because all of the homeowners along that block between 19th and 20th desire to have the dust control. I think it saves the city not having to do grading on those areas. I know Councilor Pearson, you would like to see curb and gutter there. The citizens haven't, and we can certainly, when we have a public meeting next year on doing the bituminous surfacing, we can still follow up with them on that and see if they, there is a storm sewer there, but whether we should keep it a rural section with the low ditches there or have curb and gutter, I think is up to the citizens also. They haven't indicated they want curb and gutter, but they have indicated they do want the bituminous surfacing and are prepared to pay for the cost of that. So I think that there's, there's good value in doing the one block. The argument about maybe buying some of the 50-foot lots and putting them together, I think, has some value. On the other hand, we've only had two houses in the last four years or five years built in International Falls. I don't know that, even if the city bought them and sold them at a reasonable price, that you might have anyone buying the lots and building on them. So I don't know that we, we should put money, citizens' tax dollars into, into buying properties right now. I think that there's some, some good thinking there because I know that the city administrator in discussions with the, on the comprehensive plan sees a value in making sure that we've got good buildable lots available, and we should have. So it's, it's got both good and poor arguments for that.
I would continue.
As far as the issue of very little new development in the way of residential housing happening, you know, you do have residential building going on outside of the city limits, which goes to the crux of the matter, that you have higher real, combined property taxes within the city are twice as high as they are outside of the city. And the people who live outside of the city have sewer, and they have water if they live in Rainier, of course, but, and they have access to the library and everything else that a city residents pay for. So if you're going to make a calculation about where you're going to build a new house, you're going to think, okay, should I pay for city services when I really don't have to, and pay twice as much in taxes? Or should I build my new home outside the city limits? And that's what we're running into. And that's why, again, we need to think about annexation and some, we do, we have to. Otherwise, the city isn't going to thrive, and if we don't thrive, the whole area doesn't thrive. But anyway, so I'm sorry to go.
Well stated. Very well stated. Thank you. Further discussion with regard then to the motion to authorize the work and the expense of stabilizing that one block on Sixth Avenue West from 19th to 20th? Question?
Aye. No.
Aye. No.
Now vote yes, there being three for the motion and two against. The motion carries, and the work is authorized. Item G then is the last recommendation, and that's just to authorize the Public Works Department to conduct a review of street lighting at the request of citizens on Second Avenue East and Fourth Avenue East in the 22nd Street to Memorial Drive area. I know that we're looking at doing some improvements on Fifth Avenue East with the addition of some street lighting, but the citizens see the older section of town being very well lighted, and they would like to be able to walk down their blocks and feel comfortable also. And so we are getting requests to at least review that, that street lighting and the needs there. So we're asking our Public Works Department to do that, and would ask your motion to approve that.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Jackson?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Drogba? Discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and work will commence on that. Any other new business? That will go to reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. The, we received a notice this morning that there's a sculpture celebration on Monday, July 17th at 5:00 p.m., which is the same day that we have our council meeting, but the library's going to be having that on the Library East Lawn. So again, that's Monday, July 17th at 5:00 o'clock p.m., so I'm just bringing that to your attention. Secondly, you'll notice that we did not have a police report on this agenda. Because of moving the meeting up and this being the beginning of the month, the police department did not have time to prepare the report, so we'll have that report on the second agenda of the month, so you'll see that next meeting. Third, I just wanted to point out for your information that we have completed installing the Smokey Bear Fire Danger Sign over at Smokey Bear Park. The sign was provided by the DNR out of the Little Fork Office, and you might recall that we authorized the Public Works Department to install that. So they got that done last week. It looks very nice. They've got a planter box at the base with some timbers around it, so they did a nice job with that. And so I wanted to thank our Public Works crews for the work doing that, and it'll be ready for the parade tomorrow. And then the other item I just wanted to bring up, based on the conversation that we just had on the Sixth Avenue West improvements, it is on the agenda, on the agenda later, but we will be meeting as a committee of the whole on Wednesday, July 12th at 1:30 p.m., and the purpose of that meeting is to go over the street assessment that WSN, the city's consulting engineer, had done in looking at the streets back in May. So we'll go over that report with the council, and it might be an appropriate time to have a conversation about what we do with some of these other streets that aren't improved at the time, or at the present time, rather than just looking at the streets that we do have that are paved and need either reconstruction or milling overlay. So we can have more discussion about that and what we, how you want to approach that going forward while we have the engineers here and the Public Works Department staff. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention as well. Any questions for me? If not, I'll go through the fire department report too. I see the fire chief isn't here.
Questions so far? I think the only other item I would just mention is the Administrative Department will be sending out a petition on Eighth Avenue East from 19th to 20th and a half Street. That's still on the, I think the council approved that a couple of meetings ago.
You did.
Okay, and so that, that petition will be going out for the residents there to consider?
Mr. Mayor, I think my preference, and I think I mentioned this to the Public Works Committee, is that I would probably like to send the same petition out to the residents on Ninth Avenue East, only because the road loops around and ties in with that, and Ninth Avenue East is also unimproved in terms of it doesn't have any bituminous servicing, it's just gravel. So I, I think as long as we're going to the effort and to try and loop that street potentially if they want it, I at least want to send the petition out to the neighbors on that street too, to see if there's enough interest to move forward with the whole project or not.
So would you ask for approval then to do Ninth Avenue also then? So would you ask for approval then to do Ninth Avenue also, then?
If the council feels it's important to do that, absolutely.
Yes.
Motion by Counselor Jackson to include Ninth Avenue East on the petition and have the citizens indicate their interest in having that street improved. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Question, or discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. Thank you. Further, on the city administrator's report. We're going to do the fire...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The fire chief, as they typically do, provided the report for the month of June. We received that this morning, and it was emailed to the council. You'll see that there was three fire department call-outs in June where the full department was paged. Two of those responses were in the city, and one was for a car fire. The second was for a house full of smoke. There was one rural fire response. And you can see that there was a motor vehicle accident that was canceled en route, and then we had one response in the rural area for a grill or deck fire, and the fire chief responded to that particular call. There was also three carbon monoxide alarms in the community, and the chief responded to all three of those. There was two investigations for burning smells, and then we did two train fills of water for CN in the month of June. They had a monthly meeting on the 15th where they did regular business, and then they had some training for both fireworks and then two-minute drills. And that completes the fire department report for June. Regarding the ambulance department for 911 calls, they had 75. That compares to 112 last year, which is a, more of a difference than what we've typically seen. Transfers were at 33, and in 2016, we had 65. And then the total for the month was 108, and in comparison for June of 2016, we had 177. So the call volume has been down a little bit with the ambulance department. They also had a monthly training on the 14th of June, and their training was on trauma scenarios. Regarding housing issues, and the fire chief is the housing inspector in the month of June, you can see they sent out 75 letters regarding grass that exceeded the code requirements, eight for abandoned vehicles, 11 on other items, junk and debris on properties. They sent a notice to one house that didn't have a house identification number on it, and so the total letters that went out or responses in the area of housing was 95 for the month of June. So that concludes the fire, rescue, and EMS department report.
Any comments or questions with regard to the fire department, ambulance, and I would just note the work on having grass, that's a significant number, 75. Also taking care of eight automobiles that were not licensed. Just great work by the housing department under the fire chief. Goes along with the cleanup that the city did in June. I think all of that, hopefully, will make a much better-looking community. Further from the city administrator?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you for your good report. Go to the city attorney.
Nothing special report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Move to department heads. None here. How about, we'll go to reports of mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
I attended the town hall meeting that our representative, Eklund, held. And I asked him to look into the issue of changing the enabling legislation for the sewer district so that the billing system could be more fairly equitable to city residents. He had responded immediately and was quite Johnny-on-the-spot with responding to this issue. He had his research department at the State Capitol look into it, and the verdict is, they can't change it. And they can't change it because I guess if they do, the unifying force of the universe will cause us, will fail and we'll all be blown to bits. I don't know why you can't change legislation. It's not physical law. But evidently, if they changed it, they'd have to change it for all the cities who have sewer districts that are, who have sewer systems that they, sewer services they purchase from an area sewer system, okay, an area sewer district, which I think is, well, then you should. Because everybody who lives in a city under this scenario is being charged incorrectly. So I absorbed that comment that it can't be changed. I have yet to figure out exactly why it can't be changed. I don't, I think that's an issue for cities to coalesce around and bring forward, maybe to the league. Because in my mind, changing it for us is, would mean that they'd have to change it for other cities is not a good excuse. So that's my follow-up on that. The other thing, I had a number of questions about was the progress of hiring CFO for our city. How's that going?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, counsel, we had advertised for the finance officer position vacancy. We indicated, we stated in the advertisement that the position would be open until filled, but we said we'd be considering applications on June 27th, which was Friday. And so we, yeah, so we just, we, I think we only got, I have to look again, but I believe we only got three applications, and I passed them on to my staff to look at on Thursday.
Okay. Because Brian and I are on that Human Resource Committee, so, and then...
And where was the advertising done, city administrator?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, we advertised in the League of Minnesota Cities website, The Journal, the Duluth paper, Bemidji paper, Grand Rapids paper, and the Star Tribune. The cost to advertise those vacancies, the combined cost was fairly significant, much higher than I thought it would be, but we advertised in all those places to generate interest. We also tried to get the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officers organization to advertise the vacancy and the Government Finance Officers Association. Really extensive.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, do you envision that the Human Resource Committee will be involved in reviewing those apps or being...
We can. Typically, what we would do is Betty and myself, for this particular position, as the department heads would review the evaluation criteria with the applications that came in and rank the candidates, and then schedule interviews. And the Human Resources Committee could participate in those interviews if you wish.
Well, I think that I would like to. Brian?
I think we did last time.
And then, the other, I have a number of things. What about the, are we working on parameters for economic incentives? Were we authorized that just last time? So how's that process? Where we're, the city administrator is looking into providing a proposal for parameters surrounding economic incentives. Didn't we?
Well, the, he has agreed to participate with tax abatement for the Granite Digital project, and so that's what we're working on, is to work on the development agreement for that specific project.
Oh, I'm mixing up with EDA. I think we did this at EDA, didn't we? Talk about...
No, we did that at the city.
Oh, was it?
So we're looking at doing that, and we talked about that at the last meeting. I haven't made a lot of progress on that. We need to, the council authorized moving forward with a business subsidy agreement and crafting a development agreement. The developer provided a copy, and I also received a copy from the county administrator on what the county had enacted with Granite Digital. And so we have that information, and we'll be preparing something. Our EDA is scheduled to, and the council is scheduled to meet again on July 7th. I'd like to have some information to consider at that meeting.
And then, finally, and speaking of economic development, we were going to annex the multimodal. How is that going? I mean, we haven't brought up that issue at a city council meeting for half a year.
No, I think the, you know, the city attorney's prepared to move forward with the annexation. There's two different processes we have to follow, whether we own the property or not. And I have a call into, and I have spoke to MD&amp;W to see if they would voluntarily agree to have the 100-foot-wide lot where the MD&amp;W spur runs from the Canadian National Line into their rail yard, and that's immediately adjacent to the multimodal site. And he indicated that he would check with one of the senior vice presidents down in Illinois. I have not heard back from him, and so I intend to try and meet with him after the fourth holiday to see if I can't get a definitive answer one way or the other, whether they will do that. And, you know, my hope is, is that they will because we'll have some more continuity in the city parcels without having donut holes, or not too many of them in the corporate limits of the city.
Well, if they refuse, then we can force an annexation. And I would personally, I'd be prepared to do that before we'd start carving out donut holes in the city. I mean, we need to, at least, to use Trump's words, protect our borders so that we have logical borders, right? So if they don't want to cooperate, well, then, you know, we do have other avenues.
Well, that's something that the whole council would have to make a decision on before we go forward.
Yeah, right. I'm just putting my opinion out there.
We'll work with the city attorney. The other part related to economic development is, we received a notice, I was on vacation the early part of, mid, early to mid-part of June, and I received an email while I was gone. The shovel-ready program, deed is preparing one-page flyers that kind of describe the shovel-ready sites, and as you know, we have the multimodal site, which is shovel-ready. And so we just sent in on Friday, a flyer for us to, to them so that they can market the multimodal site, and so that was just sent off, and that had a deadline, so we were kind of seeing to get that done, too. So, and I'll provide that to the EDA at the next meeting so you can see that. And we have an opportunity to change that over time if we need to as well.
And one other, final, and then I will shut up. One other question. Do we have all of the invoices in for the garbage effort that we had on the 17th?
I'm not aware of any others.
Okay. Because I want to know, I want to be able to report to the council on what we spent.
I think we would have got the, most of the invoices from you, would we not? And your committee, so as far as I know, we have everything that you submitted.
Okay. I'll have to check, then, because I'd like to know what it cost us. Well, no, because I wouldn't have been able to submit the county landfill bill or the Friends bill. So I would not have submitted those.
Well, I can see if those have been submitted. I can work with Betty, who's been doing the accounts payable now, so.
Thank you. Further on the council committees, boards, and commissions. Counselor Briggs?
I don't really have anything other. I just would like to give kudos to staff and all those involved in getting Smokey Bear Park spruced up, sidewalks repaired, landscaping that was done. It truly does really look nice, so, you know. A lot of hard work by a lot of people getting that done, so, thank you very much.
Very much appreciated. Thank you.
I'll pass that on, for sure.
After the Fourth of July and the past tournament last year is how broke up that sidewalk was and unsafe it was, and the fact that before we have our first big event in Smokey Bear Park this year, that it's been fixed, I think...
The city street department had a contractor assisting them in that project, and I think it's turned out very well. All right. I would submit my written report to you, and you can take time to read that as you want. I would also received a memorandum from the League of Minnesota Cities that was handed out this morning, and that's awarding State Representative Rob Eklund. He is being recognized as a legislator of distinction for the year 2017 by the League of Minnesota Cities. I would like to have the council authorize by sending him a letter of congratulations and thank you for his work on behalf of cities in Minnesota.
So moved.
Motion by Counselor Drowba?
Second.
Second by Counselor Briggs. Discussion?
Yeah, he's been successful at bringing home the bacon, I think, to the tune of about $13 million this last legislative session, much of it for ATV trails, you know, which is good for tourism and...
The airport...
And the airport, yes, of course.
Terminal building and the sewer projects.
Yeah, and the sewer.
Yes, I mean, there's been, there's been significant work done there, but just his overall voting on city issues has been recognized by the league, and I think we ought to, at the same time, thank him for that. Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion is carried. I'll get that letter out. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to bring something to the attention of the council?
As respect to the CFO situation, what are the circumstances of the departure of the CFO that was fired last year?
Moved away. She moved away.
Moved away. Did she have another job, or was it...
Her husband had a job.
Her husband was with the, was with the mine over in Fort Frances, and his services were discontinued, and so they're moving to Arizona.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else not note the correspondence and the reminder that we will be meeting on Wednesday, July 12th? And then the next council meeting is the 17th.
I won't be there on the July 12th meeting. I will be out of town.
With that, turn the meeting with a July 4th wish for a safe and happy holiday. Thank you.